There you go. Okay, can everybody take your seats, please?[11.11][11.11](laughter) Hey, wait. Just because you went to school doesn't mean you get to sit over there. I think you're due for a few more classes before you can sit there. I hear it pays better, though. We're on that side.[31.11][31.11](laughter) Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the meeting back to order again, please. And Audrey, we are to second reading, public hearing, and following ordinances, are we not?
We are. And I'm going to read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs considering the petition of Bonita Springs Utilities, Inc., to revise the water tariff and wastewater tariff consistent with the franchise in Bonita Springs Ordinance Number 02-14 and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. The first reading was held on July 22nd, July 16, 2014, where council moved the ordinance and the petition to public hearing tonight. I do want to point out that Mr. Jenkins did provide me with some changes to the draft ordinance. County Attorney's Office has changed their process. So, in the ordinance, on page two, it will be ending in section two, just with the sentence as far as the provision of the ordinance shall take effect 30 days following adoption by city council by official vote at the conclusion of the public hearing. It doesn't go back to county commission as far as any approval of the petitions. With that being said, Mr. Jenkins can provide you with the presentation if you have questions on the amendments to the water and wastewater tariffs. I did put a brief executive summary on the first page as to those changes. Also, Councilmember Gibson did ask a question, and I did convey it to both Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Thompson, who believe that is just how they drafted it. They did not, or the changes, you always have to, if they ever want changes to BSU, they have to come back to this tribunal, to the city council, to ask for changes consistent with the tariff. So, it's not necessary to have that language, that they reserve the right to change it. They kept it in some places and not in others.
Yeah, it's in the...
But they didn't see that as a significant issue.
Arms section, no.
Right.
Okay, good. John, do you want to give a presentation here?
Mayor, council members, I'm John Jenkins with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson. We're special counsel to Bonita Springs Utilities. I have with me today Jim Strzakanski, who is the Utilities President, staff members Fred Parton and Mary Mima and Debbie Batista, and their general counsel, Don Thompson. Mayor, to take your lead, I have an abridged presentation tonight, and that is, the petition has been filed. It's to revise the tariffs. It's been filed with your clerk and with the county attorney's office, along with any correspondent that relates to the petition. The changes are simply to the rules and regulations of the utility. There are no changes to the rates or charges that are collected, and there are no substantive policy changes. We're here because section 5.1 of the franchise between the utility and the city requires the city to approve changes in the tariff in addition to changes in rates and charges. The standard for the city's approval is reasonable standard. So, if these changes and rules and regulations are reasonable, then, under the terms of the franchise, the city should approve. The county is also a party to the franchise. The petition was filed with the county. On May 22nd, the county attorney's office issued a letter saying that they found the changes were minor and that the county had no objection or suggested changes. Each of the tariffs is about 30 pages long. The changes are interwoven throughout the tariffs, and there are quite a number of them. The petition itself summarizes those changes, as does the green sheet. So, on that basis, I won't get into the details, but myself or the utility staff would be happy to answer any questions you have on that. And we'd request you approve the ordinance as amended by the city attorney's prior comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Move the item?
Move the item? You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we are going to go to public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. And this is about the water tariff, just as a reminder.
About the water tariff?
About the water tariff.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you very much. Anyone else which to speak about the water tariff? Seeing none, counsel, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Nope. Rule call, please.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this time, we will take public comment on any city item. Any city item, please come forward.
I'd like to take advantage of the opportunity that the attorney for Bonita Springs Utility, Don Thompson, is present. I've been trying to get the permit for the installation of the pipes by Roeheli Plumbing and Sons on my primary residence unsuccessfully. What they've done is they've tried to block me from obtaining such document, which is indeed public and should be provided readily upon request. So, I'd like to make that a matter of record on the recording. Furthermore, as I've mentioned before during my introductory comment, I was harassed by a police deputy a few days ago who gave me a ticket that's going to cost $111, or that would cost $111 should he prevail in court, which there's no reason why he should prevail in court, because I was wearing my seatbelt. I was coming out of Bank of America, which is a block from here, two blocks from my home. He knows exactly where I live, because this particular deputy has been harassing me now for quite some time. He alleges that he saw me coming out of that parking lot without wearing my seatbelt, which, by the way, you don't have to wear your seatbelt in that particular part, because you're not in an actual street. Then he turned around on a royal, he was heading out from the substation where they're headquartered here in Bonita, and followed me, and on this loudspeaker ordered me to stop at the strip center that's a few yards from where I live. I believe it's called the Beach Plaza. So, he kept me for 45 minutes writing up this ticket, which calls for an $111 payment should one not prevail in court, at which time he was extremely disrespectful towards me, so I took the liberty to call the city manager while, well, first his captain, who is now Captain Keith Day, to try to use that buffer to avoid the type of disrespect that these individuals tend to have towards people that are from the country that I'm originally from, which is indeed Mexico, as I said before. And this is part of what I'm going to be bringing to court. The fact that I came in here, I presented to the city council, as I have many other times, my complaint that these individuals are acting in the fashion that I've clearly articulated that they are towards a particular demographic. And I'm going to be then bringing that to the attention of the judge, so that I can further document, as per the requests by the Department of Law Enforcement, whom I've complained about the wrongful incarceration that I was a victim of and several other things that I've brought to you all's attention, so that once I accumulate enough of these incidents, then they can move to open a case, because they have a threshold, which I have not yet met, from what I understand. So, I've been a victim of significant amount of police brutality in the past. I've brought this to you all's attention several times. It is my opinion, as it is, for example, Bishop Desmond Tutu, who's a peace, Nobel Priest Prize winner, that when you are aware of injustice, and you do not, and you are neglectful of such scenarios, you take the side of the oppressor. In this particular case, it's indeed an agency that is supposed to be helping us by protecting us rather than harassing us, and that affect the quality of our life in a significant fashion. And as a result of the disavowalism that I'm obligated by, I'm here to so report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any city item. Mr. Mayor, how you doing?
Fine.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, the good-looking ones on this side, and then the other side.[633.41][633.41](laughter)
Yeah, don't look at it.
Oh, my goodness.
No, no, no.[639.16][639.16](laughter)
I'd be a little concerned about that.[642.16][642.16](laughter) At the July 23rd council meeting during the public comment section, a statement was made by a resident of the city about police presence one evening at the Leitner Neighborhood Park. I believe the comments were along the line that several police were being present and handcuffing a man and hauling him off. You received an email from Nicole, the Parks and Recs Department, detailing what did happen, but it's not in the record, and I want to make a few statements for the record. There was no police report made. There was no arrest made. There was no handcuffing. What it was, the truth of the matter is, that there was a runaway teen, and he was known to be present at the park, and several deputies were there and escorted him to the car and removed him. So, I also wanted to update you a little bit on what's going on at the park. Things are going rather well. On any given night, you'll find anywhere from 30 to 75 kids playing there, which I think is probably the busiest park in the city. The Cafe Life at this time is feeding on an average of the high 70s, maybe 80 mark a day. And there are, there was a comment also made, I believe, at this meeting last month, that people were coming out of the woods and were at the park early. I don't know of any woods around there, but I have been there quite a few times early in the morning, and there are people there at 8:00. And I've thought about it, and I guess I come up with the idea or the reasoning. First of all, it is a city park, so it is open from dusk, or from dawn till dusk. People generally start gathering there shortly after 8:00. And I guess if you're eating one meal a day, you probably have a reason to want to get there early, particularly on a Monday, and your last meal being on a Friday, I can understand why people are there early. But it's very orderly. They socialize, and then about 10:00, the feeding starts. We have security cameras there. There was one little episode where some young ladies, about 12 to 13 years old, picked up some charcoal from the charcoal grill and made a little diagram on the back of the building. Our security camera caught them, and we posted a picture of them on the building with a little comment below it that you may not want your parents to see this picture, and you certainly don't want to have Lee County Sheriff's Department see it. That's the last instant I've heard about there. I was asked a few months ago by some of the ladies that attend the park, that are neighbors in there, that they really wanted to do something to make the community better, to make it equal to the quality of the park that they have in there. So, they put together a committee. It's called a Committee for a Purpose. And a couple of things that we've tackled so far is, we've, are working on an adopted street program. Last week, we had trash pickup on Thursday night. We picked up 34 bags of trash, and we plan on doing that once a month. We also are interested in getting a hold of the animal control people and maybe having some kind of a meeting where they can impress upon the importance as far as safety and cleanliness of the area if their dogs are on a leash. So, that's a couple of things they're going to tackle. They really have a high interest in wanting to bring up the quality of that community. And I think that they understand that if they work to bring up what they can do, then they can approach a city on things like maybe more streetlights, sidewalks. And I got to tell you, of all the times I went out there during the building, every morning when school was on, you could see a bus pull up and load at one stop, kids, 45 kids, into the bus. And it's, there's hundreds of kids in the morning walking the streets there to a corner to get to the buses. So, sidewalks are something that's needed, and streetlights on some of the side streets are needed. The thing that really struck me the most was that they said that they want to get rid of the stigmatism of Rosemary Park, that when they tell somebody they live in Rosemary Park, it kind of reminds me of when I was a kid, you lived on the wrong side of the track. That's the impression people give them when they find out they're from Rosemary Park. I think the day's going to come when they may come to you and show you what they can do and ask, can we change the name of the community, which I don't think would be any big deal. So, anyway, that's kind of an update of what's happening. Got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the mayor? Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for everything you do. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
Thanks.[926.11][926.11](applause) Anyone else this time, please come forward. Hello?
Good evening. Kathy McGrath for the record, and I would just like to tell Mayor Aaron that as a member of the Street Lighting Committee, we are addressing street lighting in the park there, and of course sidewalks are being installed. So, I think everyone will be very pleased when it's all completed. What I wanted to talk about was, I recently learned that the city was criticized by someone about River Park, about the lack of amenities at River Park, which of course is the park on the west side of 41. When that park was originally planned, it was planned to be like a passive park, to give people access to the river, to have the paddlers coming down the Calusa Blue Way, paddling trail, to have a stopover point and all. And there are amenities that were planned to come in increments as money became available. And I know that they are coming. Both water is being planned and restroom facilities, so they will be coming. So, the other thing was about trash being thrown all over. Well, there's that nice big dock there, which naturally the boat parade, everyone thinks it's a wonderful place, and it is to watch. It gives people access to it. But Parks and Recreation had to remove the garbage can from the dock, because people were putting like dead fish and a lot of real nasty things in it. And as a member of the Imperial River Conservancy, as you all know, Richard Ferrera proposed the collection of monofilament, and Bonita Springs Utilities made the receptacles, and they were installed. And we installed one out there on the dock. And I can tell you what we were finding in there was not monofilament. Some of it's unmentionable, but wrappers and cigarette butts and cans, people just don't know what, no trash, please. So, we had to remove that receptacle, too. So, maybe that'll answer the people's criticism of why things don't, there aren't that many amenities. They will be coming, little by little, as far as I said, water and restroom, but as far as the trash, there are trash cans there, not out on the dock. And it's just for people being responsible, but I just wanted that to be in the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any city item.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Colabor, and I'm with Spanish Wells. I bring something that might not be well-known by these council members, but that this council has lost the confidence of the residents of the city of Bonita. Now, they're all good people up here, but nevertheless, the issue of the homeless shelter and now the flyover has just caused individuals to say things to me, like you council members, particularly the five that voted against the study, do not have the courage to remove permanently those members who voted in favor of the study at the NPO meetings. They say you don't have the courage to be able to do that. You're afraid of the mayor and the vice mayor, and you will not do that tonight. Now, the confidence is lost, and some people will say, well, gosh, I feel sorry for the mayor and the embarrassment and the vice mayor if we remove them. Well, if we get a flyover, and as the state testified, the property owners lose 20% of the value of their properties, and the businesses get destroyed, those are the people you should be worrying about and feeling sorry for, not the mayor and the vice mayor, who violated the code of conduct of the city. And by the way, I thought we had a violation of the code of conduct of the city with former council member Simon. And from what I understand, I was here at the meeting, there was a public censure. Now, the only way this council is ever going to get the respect back that they deserve to have is to follow through, remove both of these members from the NPO, reassign two other members who are against the study, and then you will be showing the residents that you have the backbone to do what's right for the city and right for the residents of the city. Now, you're going to decide this tonight, but I'll tell you what the people out there are telling me. There's no way you five members are going to vote to remove the mayor and the vice mayor. There's no way. So, the decision is yours. What are you going to do? What are you going to do to establish the confidence and the respect in this council? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Jesse Purdon, District 2. Two things I'd like to address. Number one, the gentleman who was addressing the Bonita Springs Police Department. I will share some things with you that I have shared with probably only Councilwoman Simmons, and I'm not ashamed to talk about the fact that I, since November of last year, I've been pulled over four times. You know what? I'm a young guy. I have a nice car, and I live in a rougher part of Bonita, and these things happen. I've been pulled out of my car. I've had my car searched. But I'll tell you what, I don't hold any ill will towards the police department of Bonita Springs. We live in a beautiful city. We live in a safe city. These type of things do happen. These type of things are unfortunate. Every now and then, maybe even there's a bad apple. But I'll tell you what, I have had the pleasure of communicating with Sheriff Scott on a number of occasions through my work, and he's a, he's one heck of a guy. And I've explained to him numerous times that I think the Bonita Springs Police Department is top-notch, and I think that we should be grateful to have them. And I think that pulling out the race card, I'm a couple shades darker than the guy who was up here, and I think that the race card is, quite frankly, not the way to go. I don't think it's the right thing for anybody, for the citizens or the police department, because it creates more of an issue than we need to have. I think that it's unfair to sit here and categorize and paint our police department as in some way racist. I think it's wrong, and I would like to go on record saying that I don't feel that way, even though, like I said, I myself, I've been pulled over. I've been pulled out of my car. I've been searched. You know what they found in my car? City council notes. They found city council notes. They found Kirk Clausen signs. I was sitting on the side of Old 41. Was it embarrassing? Yeah, but you know what? Nobody's, you know, when you live where I live and you, how many times, maybe that happens once, but there's 50 times something good happens. There's 50 times your streets are safer, and those are never talked about, ever. And I think that it's time that somebody did say something about that. So, I commend them. And furthermore, as far as the city council goes, look, I'm not even going to get into the portion of you should or you shouldn't, or I dare you, or I double dog dare you, or I triple dog dare you, but let's just say this. I will say that I have respect for you because you said how you felt about the issue. It went down the way it went down, but we were all here. Everybody was here. The next meeting, what happened? Fireworks, okay? You guys didn't sit down and say, we're not going to take it. I don't feel that there was a lack of backbone, and I don't feel we'd be having a vote again today. I don't think we would have had the second vote, and I don't think we would have had the fireworks that we had last time around if you did not have a backbone. How you proceed, well, I mean, that's why I stuck around, I'm not going to lie. But you do have a backbone, and I would like to say that I support you, and I support the police department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we are done with that part of it, and we are to the city attorney's report. Audrey, what do you have for us?
Good evening. For the record, Audrey Vance, city attorney. I was asked at city council's July 2nd meeting, and then again at July 16th meeting, to come back and research what options were available for council to meaningfully communicate the majority position from the vote taken in January 2014. I did provide a memorandum here, and I can go through the memorandum with painful detail if you so wish, but let me go through just an abbreviated version.
That has been what we've been doing tonight, so...
I hope, okay.
Tell council I want you to get some more detail. I'm sure it'll be all right.
Right. First of all, there's different ways you can look at the code of conduct, and like any drafting document, whether it's a statute, an ordinance, administrative code, you need to interpret it based on certain rules of statutory construction and statutory interpretation. Ultimately, I did that based on my understanding of statutory construction, which is probably very boring, and also making sure that in the context of both the U.S. and the Florida Constitution, that the reading would be constitutional. Now, I thought it was interesting about the gentleman who came up here and brought up the homeless shelter, because I got to tell you, when doing the research during the homeless shelter, I was asked for things in ordinances such as having people wear identification documents on their body so they could be seen, or they could have certain types of screening, or have other things that pretty much were invasive on civil rights that were reminiscent of the Holocaust. Same thing here as far as speech. You know, people have a right, under the Constitution, absent conduct, to have their own thoughts. You know, so there is, you know, I hope that council will read the memorandum and understand that the purpose is not to be the thought police. With that being said, I wrote up a range of actions, and I believe there are six of them there. And the range of actions is what you can do now. I will tell you, there is a case out there, and I discuss it at length in the memorandum, where they did remove an elected official from the NPO. It was done in Texas. It was not done because the person did a vote, it was because the person took the city stationary and tried to purposely mislead F dot into thinking, or not F dot, I'm sorry, T dot, I get the names wrong, thinking that the NPO had actually voted the other way. So, it wasn't something where there was an actual, this is my personal opinion, it was something more to the effect of the person was doing things to actually go into conduct and sabotage. And I will say, there are cases dealing with First Amendment speech, where if it's coupled with things like sabotage or bribery, you don't have an absolute right. But absent that, I could not find anything that would forbid that. So, I did try to write up ranges of action, and in the memorandum, in the green sheet, it's just a very short executive summary of just what it's listed. In the actual memorandum, it goes through each of those different ideas, beginning on page six of the memorandum, and again, I apologize for the length of the memorandum. Council can do things such as not take any changes, and that would give the existing NPO members to vote as they deem fit in accordance with the rights in the Florida Constitution, the U.S. Constitution. Council could request those NPO members, Mayor Nelson and Deputy Mayor McIntosh, to just abstain from voting at it because of an appearance of a conflict, and I go into length explaining some of that. At that point, the disadvantage is that there is no vote for the city of Bonita Springs. Likewise, city council may request the NPO members who are the minority viewpoint to just be absent at the meeting. At that point, Councilmember Gibson, who is an alternate, can go in and then vote in the majority, assuming he votes in the majority, because he does have a right to vote in the minority viewpoint, if so wish, based on the viewpoint. But I would assume he would vote in the majority viewpoint. And also, with that choice, you know, you could have another alternate, and if both are absent, both alternate attends, and then you would have both having that vote. And that's actually number four, to request the additional alternate, and that goes into Mr. Rooney. And incidentally, Mr. Rooney is here today. If you have questions about the NPO, would be able to have the two votes. You could, as was discussed July 2nd, temporarily appoint different NPO representatives for a time certain, such as two months, and also request the NPO not to take any affirmative action to replace the current NPO chair, which is Deputy Mayor or Councilmember McIntosh. That's something council can do. Nothing would preclude, if council decided to take that action, nothing would preclude Mayor Nelson or Councilmember McIntosh from attending, even though they're not on the NPO and expressing their viewpoint. And then finally, as suggested by some members of the public, remove the two existing members of the NPO, and then appoint with two additional members. Now, with that being said, I think council can have a discussion, if they have any questions as to legal points raised in the memorandum, I'll be happy to answer those. And then I also did some research as to the alternate, which was brought up at the July... And then I also did some research as to the alternate, which was brought up at the July 16th, 2014 city council meeting, and that's where we have a citizen advisory board member. My understanding from the clerk is now we do have multiple applicants. We don't have just one additional applicant that lives in the city. But the position that I, from reviewing the document, and I have the document set forth in full in the memorandum, is they serve at the person who appointed them. So, at that point, unless the person who appointed them decides to take that person out, it's really not something that's a city call. If it's something that city feels strongly, I guess you can go back to that removal and then have somebody else do the appointment. It's problematic, but that's basically the research.
Okay. Good. Counsel, Steve, do you have something?
I, I do.
I bet you did.
I do.
Go ahead.
I received an email from Carmen Monroy last night late, and I have copies of that email for the record, if Diane would pass those out, please. It's directly relevant to the decision being made here.
Okay. While she's passing them out, do you wanna kind of summarize what it might be, or?
It won't take long.
Oh, it'll take, okay. Thank you.
I'll read it for the record, as much as anything. This is from Carmen Monroy, dated August 5th, 2014, and it's to me, Stephen McIntosh, with carbon copies of several people on the FDOT and Lee MPO. And the subject is Benita Beach, US 41 Benita Beach Road Project Development Environment PDE and E Study. Councilman McIntosh, I understand the city of Benita Springs at its July 28th, 2014 council meeting, took action to undertake a visioning study for the Benita Beach Road and to remove the city's contribution for future widening in out years. Given this action, it will be our recommendation to Lee MPO that the PD and E be suspended until the visioning study is completed, so that the results of this study can inform the future of this important corridor. We will continue to work closely with the city of Benita Springs and Lee MPO. This recommendation will be presented at the August 6th, 2014 meeting of the Lee MPO, TAC and CAC committees, should've read the 7th, because that's the date, and at the August 22nd, 2014 MPO meeting, Carmen Monroy, Director Southwest Office. As I said all along, I don't wanna fly over. The FDOT decision has several pluses to it, and I'd like to run through them if you'll indulge me. I think after talking to Carmen and trying to understand what the suspension of this study means is, first, and maybe most importantly to the county itself, it retains that $1 million in funds for Lee County use. We don't, if you, if you abolish the study, the funds disappear, and the county can't get them back. And second, most, maybe most importantly, it really allows the council time to step back, analyze the entire Benita Beach Road, US 41 corridor, and come to some logical, unified decision on what our vision of where we want to be with small-town charm, big, bright future. And we, we simply can't live by that motto unless we have a long-term plan, and we need that long-term plan before we make any of these, these decisions. And maybe finally, suspending the study really allows us to reinstate the study at some point. If it's suspended, it allows us, the council, to try to reinstate it, if we believe it's necessary. And frankly, a study of some sort is critical, because I don't believe you can have small-town charm that includes sitting in snarled traffic, nor do I believe it means being stalled on Benita Beach Road, fearing for the lives of your loved ones, because you're unable to evacuate during a hurricane. The anti-growth comments of build it, they will come, is kind of ludicrous, because they're coming. Everything says we're gonna see 600,000 more people in this area using those roads in 25 years. You can't have small-town charm or, or a big, bright future without a strategic plan for the infrastructure going forward. So, if the suspension allows us to take time out, to go back and look at the corridor broadly instead of one piece of it, then I would suggest that we allow the suspension to go through. And as the MPO chair, I have assured that the TAC and the CAC are going to discuss this, not only this email, but they're all gonna, also gonna discuss the entire intersection study, study itself. So, Mr. Mayor, that's what I have for you.
And just for clarification, before we get onto the conversation, this is, this is what FDOT, they came up with this...
Oh, yeah.
...themselves. And they contacted you about this. This isn't something that's coming from our staff or from you, or from...
No, nobody, to my knowledge...
This came from FDOT this way, right?
To my knowledge, nobody on this council has contacted FDOT about this.
Okay, I just want, wanna make that clear for everybody. Counsel, what's your pleasure or displeasure? What would you like, what would you like to do? Or what discussion? Do you have any questions? We have the FDOT attorney here, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
MPO attorney.
What did I say?
FDOT attorney.
Sorry. Was, so was that the demotion I just gave you, or?
[laughing]
Yikes. Okay. Well, he's here. Anyway, so if you have any questions, or you've got, you've got a range of options, and, counsel, you need to know, whatever you need to do, I'm okay with that. Okay? I want you to know that. I'm gonna carry on. It's okay. Don't worry about me. You need to do whatever it is you need to do. All right? Okay? So, you go ahead and have a discussion. All right? Someone? Yes, go ahead.
Counselman Simmons, refresh my memory, we never, ever talked about removing anybody from the MPO. Is that correct? Initially, when you started, it was for that one meeting to use the alternate?
It was an inquiry about the meeting.
That's right.
Correct. And then I don't know who took it from there, but that was, yeah.
Yeah, so there was...
I was asked to research.
Right, for the meeting.
Yeah. So, with the suspension of the study, I mean, I have, I don't think anybody really wants to hurt anybody or anything like that. I'm, I'm comfortable with leaving the two people on there, and for looking at a vision for the futures is, is okay with me, as long as the study's suspended. I'm okay.
Well, I'm, I'm curious about something, and I have to tell you, I did vote against your motion to do the study, mainly because I, I didn't know what you meant, but would, if, is it your vision that that study would take into consideration, as Steve put better than I've heard put, that it would actually encompass something which would actually be, okay, what is it we want the road to actually be? What is the function gonna be? Is it gonna be a regional, is that the big, is that the big picture that you had in mind?
The big picture that I had in mind was, obviously, no flyover.
Right.
Obviously, not expanding, because we voted that down simultaneous, I mean, you know, at the last meeting as well. But a vision for that road so that people can bike on it, so that people can walk on it, and that it actually, you know, with, with the trees that are coming in, looks, looks something better and looks more professional, so. But in terms of expanding, making, you know, no, that's, that's not my vision, but that's one man's view. That's one person's view. And, you know, that's why I think, that's why I brought it up, and that's why, you know, I voted as I have in terms of...
The reason I, reason I ask is because the, the road has been seen as having, you know, regional significance, and that's why, that's why in the past, these plans have been made. It wasn't, wasn't to be mean or to make a vision so far as the community goes, it was to transport traffic. And so, I, I gather from what you're, what you were looking at was to go ahead and change that vision of the road. The vision has been, up until this time, to, to have that particular function. And I, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth in there, but I'm just trying to get it straight in my own head here, that we've got a little bit to talk about it. That's, that's what you were thinking of, was to, was to recreate that vision of what that corridor's function and purpose would be.
Well, really, I mean, let's face it, you say the regional function of it has been to move people and get, get them off of the beach. Well, I think, you know, sure, there's a couple of months of traffic, we all know that. There's a lot, there's traffic at a lot of intersections, but it's not my vision to continually expand the roads, contin, you know, put it, put it, you know, put it in a flyway. That's, that's not my vision. It just isn't. And a lot of other people's vision. So, to keep traffic moving, sure, of course, but that doesn't mean expand, 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 and it doesn't mean kill a study that, I mean, you know, that, that has to, for whatever reason, include a flyover. There's gotta be other studies that can be done that don't include a flyover option. It has, actually, maybe I would pose that as a question.
Well, is, is, and, and Steve, was it as your understanding, and I'm coming to Carl, 'cause you, did you, was it your impression that that's what Carmen had in mind, was like, look, go ahead, Benita, develop your vision, and then they would incorporate that vision within that study? Is that what she was trying to convey to you?
She described to me that there's a concern at the FDOT level about how this study's progressing, and obviously, it's from the conversations we've had and the public's had. And I, I would, her words were to the effect, we need to look at this as a corridor and not as an individual piece of work. So, if you're going to change the way you've looked at this in the past in different pieces, going from 6th lane that we thought you were gonna take on Benita Beach Road, down to 4th lane, not including all the options on Benita Beach Road and 41 intersection, if you don't include all those, then we wanna step back, and we want you to come up with a vision you have for transportation in this area.
Hmm, okay.
Those are mainly my words, but that's paraphrased pretty closely.
I'm gonna go to Carl, then I'll come back to you, Steve.
Okay. Just a reminder to council as well, that in addition to the, the visioning that Councilmember Simmons had recommended on July 28th, council at its strategic plan indicated, and we have budgeted in the proposed budget, a citywide traffic study that we would scope, we would control, we would fund, because we obviously have other pressure points going on in the city, and then as we have additional residents coming in, in a number of different areas of the city, and how is our infrastructure, how is our system of transportation working? And if it's not working, what are opportunities to improve that? And again, that would be a citywide study, it would give us a lot of good data, but it would be under our control. So, we would not have to be talking about a flyover at any particular location. We'd be looking at more practical solutions to issues that are addressed in that study. That's, that's coming.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, the timing on that was to coincide with the opening of Shangri-La Road. The idea was, get our latest road up and running, take it through season, take a look at how that helps understand what's going on citywide in terms of our traffic flow. That's already been approved by you, budgeted, and was, we were planning on moving forward with that.
Yes, Steve, oh, I'm sorry, Janet, I'll go over to you, Janet.
It's okay.
You keep, keep him.
Steve can go first.
Go ahead, Steven.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just trying to...
In terms of, Carl, I noticed that your words, you continue to say about studying the traffic, studying the traffic. I want you, 'cause I got permission, I want you during that visioning to go and talk to the businesses on that road. Talk to Dolly, she gave me permission. She is vehemently opposed to any widening of the road. So, that's, it's all I'm gonna say. The businesses are not happy.
Well, we're not suggesting a widening of the road. Council doesn't want that.
No, I know, but I'm saying in terms of, of people in District Three, my district, the businesses are really opposed to the widening, and that's why I brought it up.
Right. No, and I understand that, sir. Please, please understand, as more people move in, as we get visitors, and they, it's important to know where they travel in the city and how that impacts, for example, you know, the construction out on the east end of Benita Beach Road. You know, what roads are they really traveling? Are they going up Benita Grand? What does that mean? What does it mean to Terry? You know, those kinds of things, so we can get a better picture of what's happening to the system. That's all that is.
Okay.
Okay. So, I beg your pardon, Steve. Jen?
I think that study, we talked about it, I think it's important. I think we need to have that information. It might not change anything about it, but it might give us a better grasp to go back and look at our comp plan about a walkable, safe, bicycle-friendly community that we've, that we're striving for, and help us to find ways to make that happen. What I'm afraid of this letter here about the suspension is, are we just kicking this can down the road for a few months, and then we're gonna have to go through this process all over again, where, you know, this is dividing our council, and it's, it's hard to get through, and we wanna just get down to business and getting back to working on other things. And I don't wanna see this just be a, a delay of something that is inevitable, that, okay, well, now we have to, we have to say, you know, five to two again. So, I don't know. What does that mean there?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Based on the new evidence, which I was, Mr. Rooney and I were both laughing, because we weren't aware of this email going out, so, based on learning about this, it would have saved me some time, instead of talking about my whole big memorandum here. Council may want to consider having a motion, whether or not council supports the recommend, FDOT's recommendation, per the email, which is FDOT's recommendation to the MPO to suspend the PD and E study until after the visioning study is complete, so that that can also be incorporated into that study. That gives ample amount of time. I would not suggest a temporary suspension of somebody if it's gonna be a full-time suspension. And I think it's pretty clear, you've meaningfully communicated your position to at least FDOT, based on reading something like this.
May I?
Yes.
You know, I'm stepping way out of bounds here. The people at FDOT are caught in the middle. You know, we unintentionally have put them in a position that they shouldn't be in. This, this is not their responsibility to figure out how to do this and get through this issue. If, if they can, if they can figure out a way to hold this thing without embarrassing themselves in front of the governor or whomever, wherever they're getting this pressure, you know, let, let's let them, let's let them ease out. I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'd love to have the study, but it's, it's not, it's not, it's not right for us to have this kind of a relationship going on over something that's, that really, you know, we shouldn't be at this point. So, whatever you guys decide is fine, whatever you folks decide is fine, but let's, let's give them an opportunity to save some face as well as we go along here. And no, no offense to you folks in FDOT, wherever you are, I lost track of you. Thank you.
Yes, Mike?
Well, I have a question. This says it's a recommendation to the Lee MPO, and FDOT also said that it's the MPO's decision whether or not to go forward with this. Being as it's really just a recommendation, I mean, am I out of line to ask how you guys are gonna vote?
Well, you may be out of line to ask that, but let me tell you, it is a recommendation, because they can't, they can't tell us, they can't tell the MPO how to vote. The MPO tells them what work needs to be done. It goes to the TAC and the CAC, Technical Advisory Committee, and the Citizens Advisory Committee tomorrow. And that, that email, I'll be there, that email is gonna be read, and they'll consider whether or not that should be hap, happen or not. And whatever they decide, we'll go forward to the MPO. So, it's a process of getting to the MPO that we can't really decide tonight, you know. If you're asking me how I'm gonna vote, I'd ask you not to do that, because I'll have to go into another written statement, but I will. So, my suggestion to you is, let's see what the CAC and the TAC do. We're gonna have another meeting before, before that MPO meeting.
Was that date wrong? 'Cause today's...
Yes, it is wrong.
Okay. It's tomorrow.
It's the 7th.
Oh, it's the, the 7th?
Today is the 6th. When, when I got the email last night, I made sure that I knew when the TAC and CAC meetings were. Ms. Monroy has simply put the wrong date in. It is the 7th, tomorrow.
So, at, at the next MPO meeting, it's still the same vote, whether or not to go forward with the study?
I'm not sure what you asked.
Well, it's a recommending, FDOT is recommending not to, or, or to suspend it.
Right.
But it's still gonna be a vote of everybody, whether or not to suspend it.
Well, you'll have the, you'll have the input from the TAC and the CAC to make a more reasoned decision, and then, yeah, the MPO will see the same, same email.
I suspect that what, what will happen, typically in these situations, FDOT will make, will make the presentation, and the, the MPO chief, he'll come up there and say, "Oh, by the way, here's this issue before us," and what will, what he'll say is that the TAC and the CAC have followed, well, either followed or didn't follow the recommendation. They'll show the vote, and it's usually real close, the TAC and the CAC are usually right there in the ballpark with each other. And so, they'll say, "That's the recommendation that your technical advisory committee and that your citizen advisory committee made, and FDOT makes recommendation that you follow that." That's generally what they do. Then there's discussion, debate, and then the MPO votes. Now, whether or not the, the FDOT, I think, it's pretty clear, I've never, never seen an email like this, so it's pretty clear that the FDOT is looking for a way to, to, to secure that funding for some, at least someplace else in Lee County, without losing that. I think that that's it. It's very tenuous when it comes to that. And so I think that by, and I'm, I'm just reading this into it, it's, looks like by seeing, I think they were really happy to see the motion that you made there, because it said, look, this wasn't a willy-nilly decision. The city wants to actually look at this, go back, come up with their own plan, come up with their own engineering stuff, and then we'll decide whether to go through or not. That gives them time, and I think that gives them cover. I think that that's what there's, whether or not you guys want to do that or not, that's, that's the other one. I can tell you, at this point in time, if this is indeed what they're talking about, I would have to support what they're suggesting, mainly because I want to keep that relationship with the FDOT, because we are going to want them to do something for us someday. And that, that, and that would be probably the reason I would tend to, to, as an MPO member, with the information I have right now, support what they were suggesting, to suspend it until such time that the city does their, gets done with their study, comes up with a coherent vision and comes back, whatever that coherent vision is, and that coherent vision may be, we want to make it a two-lane highway again, or whatever that is, but I, I think that that's the way I would look at it. And like I said, I'm not trying to, I'm just letting you know exactly.
But how does suspending it, is that different than canceling it? I mean, how do they still get to keep the money in Lee County with the suspension?
I, I don't know, but, but I got to tell you, they wouldn't be making the suggestion if, if, if it didn't do that. I, I suspect that if it was, if they're, if, they're not looking, they're not desperate to do this, they're, they're desperate not to do this at this point. They really are, they really want out of this, but they're trying to get out of it and still maintain the money for the district. I'm, I'm reading that into it. I, I don't think anybody's trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, they hate this worse than you do, worse than anybody does. But they, but they do not want to see the district lose the money, and I think that that's what they're doing here. But you know what? That's just my read of it, I mean, I don't know. Go ahead, yes, go ahead.
So, there was a PDNE study on Colonial, is that correct? And then that cans, that study got canceled?
That's true.
Our study then got elevated, right? Is that how that worked?
I don't think they were connected, they're not connected.
I have it out in my car, I have the study, the 2010 study, I, it's out in my car.
Is it concluded?
You don't, go on up.
Conclusive.
Hold on.
Zach Burge, FDOT. I'm not 100% sure how much they were linked. The, the study that we're talking about was prioritized by the MPO a number of years back, and then at the request of the MPO, it was advanced, I think from 2018 or so up to 2014, and that's how it got to be where we are now. I'm not 100% certain on where that money specifically came from, although I know they are MPO funds, and so that's the gist of how it is.
So one, I just want to be clear, so one study got canceled?
It's the one.
Yeah, I believe so.
Right? And then, so this study entered the equation?
Right.
No.
No?
I, I don't believe that there was any, I don't remember, I don't recall any connectivity.
I, I don't want to tell you yes for sure, because I don't know.
But I mean, well, so what I'm just trying, let me ask the end game, I was going to say, let me ask the end, is this what they're, if, if we cancel the study here, that includes a flyover, is, is this what they're suggesting, so that the money can stay in the region for another study somewhere else?
I think the, the suggestion is, is that if you're going to go through a whole transportation network study of all the roads in Benita, and then a specific one for Benita Beach Road, and give us, us and your citizens and yourselves, your vision of your road, and if you go through your transportation network, maybe there are other improvements that you can make that will alleviate some of the traffic, there, there's no reason for us to sort of duplicate efforts. And so, before we do anything, whether it's to continue the study, or to cancel this study, or anything else, we can go ahead and get the results of your study and your analysis, that'll help you with your local roads, it'll help Lee County with their county roads, it'll help us with our federal roads, to, to do things that are good for the roadways, good for motorists, walkers, bikers, transit, the disabled, and we can go through all those and do what's best for them, and for the city, for the wishes of the city council and the citizens, and what's best for the roadway. And so, we'll go ahead and do your study, since you guys really want to do it, and we, us and you, will all reap the benefits of that, and then we can decide through FDOT, the MPO, the city, everyone, what the next steps are, if anything.
All right. All right.
I just want to say a few things.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, but it's, it's adding to what you're saying, and I just want to make sure council is clear to understand what you're saying. And that is, as I understand, I just want you to confirm, yes or no, or, oh, Audrey, you're definitely off on this one.
We only speak in maybes.
Okay, in maybes, but, that's planners, not lawyers. But, in this situation, the FDOT director has commissioned the study, and they commissioned the study based on the MPO planning, whatever they did over the years, to add it to their 2030, I think it's the 2030 plan now, but whatever plan number it is, to have that in the schedule for the PDNE, no different than when you guys do your budget. And then at the end of the day, after all the planning information is obtained, in order to conclude that study, it's when the director makes a determination as to what the conclusion should be. It's not necessarily what the engineer has made, as far as what the study concludes, it's what the director ultimately decides. And that's based on whatever evidence the director has in the record.
As a result of the study.
So, for example, if the, it turns out that
Any additional information.
That City of Benita comes up with alternate routes, alternate ways to deal with traffic, and they, they figure that, okay, the, the road, Benita Beach Road isn't going to take X amount of traffic, it's going to take a lot, it's going to take X minus whatever it is, it's going to be constrained, therefore, they can, they say, well, we can't, there's no need to do a, a study, because the intersection's fine for the foreseeable future, or whatever.
Potentially, I mean, as a result of what you guys come up with in your study, the department, and I, I don't know that I would say just Carmen as the director, but it, you know, the MPO is the one that really prioritized the study, and, and we, as a department, as the administrator of the funds, we hired a consultant to perform it, and, and we monitor them, and all those kind of things, but, but it, you know, any steps would go through the MPO. Whether it's at this meeting to cancel the study, or to postpone the study, or, I guess to go forward with the study, I don't know, I don't, but I would think, I, I think the main difference between this meeting and previous meetings is that the department's recommendation is to, to not go forward with the study this time.
Okay. All right. Good. Any other questions?
To stop the study completely, not, not to suspend it.
Well, I believe the recommend, I mean, the recommendation, as I understand it, to go to TAC and CAC tomorrow is to suspend the study. That, that could lead to a cancellation, it, it could be recommended by the TAC and CAC, or the MPO to cancel it anyway. I mean, that's really their prerogative. Our, it's, all we make is a recommendation, we don't have any authority, the secretary doesn't vote on the MPO, he's just there to, to speak and answer questions.
Okay. Steve.
Audrey, I guess this is for you. So therefore, procedurally, that even though this is a recommendation, the MPO can still say, the heck with Benita Springs, we can still go ahead with this study, and?
I think that's highly unlikely, but, you know, it's politicians, I'm not going to say how they're going to, I wouldn't know.
I think the answer is yes.
Theoretically, yes. The, the MPO could say, FDOT, we don't care what you think, we think the study's important. Or they could say, okay, well, if DOT and our staff and the CAC, TAC, the city all oppose it, then we want to just cancel it, or they could say, let's suspend it pending the result, it, it's totally their prerogative.
Which at this time, that's why I made the suggestion that you, I think you need to re-vote as to what your recommendation to the MPO is.
I'm betting that's going to happen. I don't know what's going to happen, but I'm betting that's going to happen, it's going, okay. Okay. Any, any other questions for the gentleman?
Not for him, but I have some things I want to say.
Okay, thank you very much for right now, and thank you for coming tonight, awesome, it's not both of you, thank you very much. Yes, Bill.
I'd like to go back to the original, you two gentlemen were appointed or voted to do these things for us, and I go back to the code of conduct, and we asked, or we're, we're all supposed to follow what the majority on council says, and the information that was provided to me in writing indicated that this was not done, and what I need to know is, if another vote comes up again, and you two gentlemen are there, are you going to support the majority of the council in their, or are you going to go off on, with your, you're titled to your, your opinion and how you want to do it for yourself, but when, when the council says it's five to two, and we don't want the study, that's, that's what I would look at. If it was, I was in the, your position, I certainly would think about reconsidering how you did that, and, and it's, that's, that's really the crux of this whole matter. Before we talk about this new proposal that, about a suspension, which all that means is, is a postponement.
I don't know what it means.
Yeah, well.
I don't know how you do it.
Well, but, but really, it's up to you two guys to advocate the position of the council in a public meeting with the MPO, and, and that's all I would ask you to do.
But I'd ask the attorney from the MPO to come forward and tell me what my obligations are.
Derek Rooney, MPO council, for the record, sorry, I was distracted talking to Zach, but if I can clarify where we are first, so that we're all, I think, on the same page. We have a study that's being conducted with FDOT dollars through the MPO as a conduit. The recommendation that was going, the vote that was going to come to the MPO was a request by FDOT that the MPO make a recommendation back to FDOT as to whether or not they should continue the study. Now, getting, reading over Audrey Solder, and seeing what Carmen suggested, we have FDOT asking Benita to join FDOT, and making a recommendation back to the MPO to then vote recommending back to FDOT what to do. So now that we're back where we are, I'll summarize my memo, which was attached to Audrey's. The MPO itself is a deliberative body. That's what it is, there, I'm in a discussion about two masters, but if the intent was for a rubber stamp, that is not the case. Lee County, the entire Lee County Commission, all five members are on the MPO, Fort Myers has three, Benita has two, and many other MPOs throughout the state, same issue, multiple voting members, there's often a split. Now, what happens is, when you are serving on the MPO, your charge is the MPO charge, which is, yes, you are representative of your constituent community, but your charge is efficient transportation planning, and then the feds and FDOT give you all these conditions that you're supposed to consider, and that's what you're supposed to vote on. The City of Benita also thinks along those same lines, but also has other conditions regarding their vision, and what the effects on property values, and the economic output. Those are considerations sometimes taken by FDOT and the MPO, but not always. So in that sense, you have the options laid out, all six options that Audrey laid out for you in her memo, I agree with all of them. Now, if that doesn't answer the question, you repeat it for me, I'm sorry I wasn't paying attention in the beginning, but I'm trying to lay it all out and see where we are.
I want, I want to cut to the chase here too, thank you very much, by the way, so, you may want to get, you want to duck for a minute. Bill, you've, you've, you've mentioned several times before, this has come up, how many times has this come up, that there was a potential, some people think there was a code of conduct violation now? I'm saying there wasn't. I, the way, and just wait, there wasn't. The way I've, and I've had a lot of attorneys look at this thing independently, and the way it is read, and the way that I've seen it interpreted, and you guys can interpret it however you want to interpret, but the way it's interpreted is that you cannot, in an ex officio capacity, which is what this is, that, that individual votes the way, and they're supposed to vote the way they are. If it was a rubber stamp thing, and it, you would phone it in, we would call in right now, yeah, City of Benita votes like this. Why do we go to a meeting? Why do we go to a meeting? Why do we have discussion? Why is there fact-finding? Why is there stuff brought before us? Why does everybody then listen to the information there and make a vote on behalf of their community? It's like this representative form of government formed over again. Now, you can think that, that you can be unhappy with my vote, you can fire me off the MPO. That's, that's your remedy. If you're not happy with it, or you don't think that I'm going to vote a particular way, then that's, that's your remedy. I support that, I support your right to do that. But what I won't do is, is not do my job, and my job clearly, in this regard, on the MPO, in an ex officio, is to, is to weigh information that comes before me. That's what I'm supposed to do. I did what I was supposed to do. Now, if you tell me, Ben, this is our motion here, we want you to sign that letter, I have to sign it, that's my job as mayor, I got to sign it and it goes out. But I can express myself on that particular board, and that's the way it is. If you tell me, go to the county commission and represent us in this manner, that's what I got to do. I got to go there and do that. But in an ex officio capacity, you can think what you want, but you're not right.
Well, we can agree to disagree. How's that?
I'll ask an attorney then.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. That the two current members be replaced.
There's a motion that the two members be replaced with who?
On the, on the, well.
With whom?
I, I.
With anybody?
Well, there's only, there's only five of us left.
Well, pick two.
Pick two.
The alternate and, and Peter Simmons.
Okay, so, Councilman Longcart has made a motion to replace the two current MPO members with Councilman Gibson and Councilman Simmons. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I want to say, I do respect both of you guys, it's, you know, it's nothing else.
Oh, hold on, I'll let him, I'll let him get finished, then I'll come back to you.
You know, the way I see the administrative code, it's the rule of the majority of the rights of the minority. You do have your right to free speech to say out your opinion, but the way I read that is, when you're there, you should be representing the, the city, council's decision. So that, that's my reasoning behind this.
What, what happened to you that one time when you came back, and you had a change of heart, after you listened to the debate? And you came back to city council, and what'd you tell us? It's exactly what it does. Mike had an opportunity then, but he was swayed by the argument at the time. That's what you're supposed to do. Sorry, Mike. I'm going to go to Steve, what, what do you got?
Well, if we're going to vote on this, I, you didn't ask if we were, what we were going to do, you simply went to replace these on the board, and that's fine, you can do whatever you want to do, but I've been advised by legal counsel to read this prepared statement, because if we go to future legal proceedings, I want to make sure this is in the record. I'm reading this prepared statement to be included as part of my, any legal proceedings in the future. Be advised that any individual, serving or not serving on the Benita Springs City Council, who has been involved in acts of prior restraint, or who has acted in a manner to impede my constitutional rights of free speech, will be held accountable under the statutes of state and federal law. It's in the record.
All right. Thank you very much. Further discussion, council, we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, further discussion.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I'm removing my name, so I think, I suggest we find somebody else.
Okay, the, the, there's a refusal to serve, would you like to name, would the person who makes the motion, would you like to name another one?
Steve Slakka.
No, I refuse.
I refuse.
Looks like it's up to you, Bill.
Okay, I'll put myself on, that's for sure.
He nominates himself. So it's Bill Longcart and Mike Gibson, and is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. And so we have a, a motion to, to replace the two current MPO members, and replace them with Mike Gibson and Bill Longcart. And any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Slakka?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Longcart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails, and with that, is there any other suggestion, or any other, what would council like to do? What's, what's your pleasure? I, I know this is not a pleasure, and I understand how difficult this is for you, I, I get it. But we're going to get past this, through this, over this, I don't know what, but we'll get there, all right? So at this time, the, right, we still have the MPO members serving as they are, do you want to take a position on anything, or do you want to still maintain the City of Benita Springs position, which this is your title? You're entitled to say, to, to Steve and I, in my mind, if we remain members on there, you need to tell them what our, our wish is, which is, we don't want to have the study, and we, we want it gone. And we have a duty to express that. And we have a duty to express that. We do, yes.
And mayor, that's what we're asking.
Okay.
That's what we're asking.
Yes, and, yes.
So, please, let's not continue on with this. Let's move it.
Okay. And we will express that, and as you know, I'll probably express my own opinion as well, but we will be sure to convey council's will.
And the community.
And I tell you, please, show up. If you feel strongly about this as individuals, or as council members, show up to the meeting, step up to the microphone and tell them, okay? Yes.
And just make sure you let us know. So Diane, make sure we post that we'll have more than just the, the MPO members being at that MPO meeting. In other words, city council members, more will be in attendance for Sunshine Law.
Okay, well, it's an advertised meeting, so.
Doesn't matter, you still have to have that extra.
Okay, if, council members, if you intend to go to the MPO meeting and speak, please let Diane know.
Sure.
Yes, Peter, go ahead.
I just want to be clear what we're asking of our members at the next meeting.
Go right ahead.
No, I'm asking.
Oh, you're asking.
What Councilman Schlaacka said, what are we asking? Express an opinion, express the five to two vote, but then vote as they want to vote?
Well, at this time.
At the August 22nd meeting is what I'm in reference to.
As I read it, and I don't have a copy of Mr. Hattaway's, or Secretary Hattaway's letter, but the original Hattaway letter, I believe, was to get input as to how MPO felt about the study and Benita Springs' request. As I read now, FDOT is recommending to Lee County MPO to actually suspend the study. So the vote would actually be to suspend the study until such time city of Benita Springs completes its visioning study.
Actually, it's not quite that simple. We don't know what the motion will be, okay? I think that the best, the best case scenario here that can happen, and I'm being really straight up as usual here, is that FDOT is going to make that suggestion. The TAC and the CAC, they may blow it off completely and say, no, we're going to do the study, or no, we don't want anything to do with it, we're done. Okay? That's, that, those two recommendations, those three recommendations will come before the MPO. There'll be discussion, there'll be a motion of some sort, or nothing, to do something. And so I think council, in as strong as terms, council, not the MPO members, council, as in stronger terms as they can, is to tell them, and for us to tell you, this is, this is what they've said. We went through this, you're all, you've all got the emails, you all know they want this thing dead and gone. And, but, but when it comes to Steve and I, or any individual member, I think that the best you can ask of us is that please communicate that for us, and we would ask you to vote that direction, we would request you to, and to take that in consideration, just like you're asking the other MPO members. You're not ordering the other MPO members to do it, you're asking them to, aren't you? When you lobby them. That's what you need to do with us, is make that request. In my opinion, that's it. And that's the consideration that we need to give it. And I think that's it.
And.
Everybody's pretty clear the way that the city of Benita feels.
I would make the suggestion to members of the public that if they feel strongly about this particular issue, one way or another, they need to communicate it, not just verbally to council members, I think you all know how most people feel, but also take it to the MPO members, either individually, the Board of County Commissioners, or the other people on the MPO boards, or actually show up at the meetings and actually voice when they're at the meetings. We actually had one of the MPO meetings here, and I don't believe anybody from the public raised that particular issue on the date of that, you know, the joint meeting, the March meeting.
So, so the way I read this is, council, you still maintain your, council, the supermajority stands, that they still don't want the study. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
That will be communicated to them.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
That will be communicated to them.
That's what we want.
Okay. All right, yes.
I'd like to address the next part that we're supposed to talk about, the MPO Citizens' Advisory Council, if I may. You know, at the last council meeting, I made a, a comment that I had no idea who Mr. Ted Trica was, who is our citizens advisory committee member.
Okay.
And I have to say that Mr. Trica gets a gold star. He called me, and he said, let's remedy that. So we had close to a two-hour conversation on visioning, what do we see, am I crazy with what I see as a vision? And I walked away from that meeting with Mr. Trica saying that this guy's a good guy, and, you know, for as much as we all are saying we'd like someone from Benita, he really has a pulse of what's going, he understood, and he, he certainly has a pulse of what's going on in our community, and he would like to continue to serve. He, as the mayor has said, that he would, you know, if, if council feels that he needs to leave at this time, he will, obviously, but I'd have to say that after that meeting, I fully support keeping him as our citizens advisory. I was, I was impressed.
He's a, he's a, he's a good man, and brilliant, too. But council, so what's your pleasure in that regard, with keeping him on there? And I have to tell you, the importance of that, that is another deliberative body, and there's all kinds of points of views on there, and I got to tell you, they do a great job, and it's really thankless.
And I suggest that if any of you other had the same opinion that I did, that I hadn't met the man, please reach out to him. He's, he's available, and he will make himself available to you to talk to about all of this, so.
So, council, you all right with keeping him on there at this particular time?
I am. I am.
I'm okay with Jan's assessment.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm just a little confused here. I don't want to move on before. I feel like there's still some issues here to talk about. Do we need to take a vote or make a motion on Carmen Monroy's letter? Because Carmen's wonderful, she's fabulous, she's been here a few times, she's very, very knowledgeable. However, I echo Janet's statements, I don't want to kick this can down the road. And that's what I see this as.
Yeah, I think by, by what we talked about a mile ago, your position remains, the five to supermajority for it.
Okay.
That's exactly.
So we don't have to take a vote on this?
No.
Okay.
No, that's her opinion.
And then, did we want to not make any recommendations here of these six?
I think we.
I think there was a, there was a motion on the floor, the motion failed. Do you want to give an alternative motion? You're free to do so otherwise.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, I didn't know the discussion was over. I do apologize, you know? When you look at, you know, not to try to open up the can of worms again, but when you look at motion number three, or excuse me, bullet point number three, request that MPO members who are in the minority viewpoint be absent at the meeting. Councilmember Gibson can serve as the alternate, of which he can vote with the majority viewpoint, recognizing that councilmember McIntosh and Mayor Nelson, nothing, you know, on and on it goes. I just want to, I want to start that discussion, but if that time has passed, I apologize.
Probably the first question is, are both of you going to be there August 22nd?
Oh.
With bells on, right?
I intend, no, I intend to. Gee, wouldn't miss it. No, I intend to be there. I wouldn't purposely meet a meeting, miss a meeting, I don't think that would be ethical on my part. It would probably be desirous on council's part, but I would feel weird purposely missing a meeting, not for any other reason than that's, it's my job. I take these things seriously, and it would be my job to be there. I don't know that I will. I may, I may end up, like I've called you many times when you were alternate, hey, something came up, I can't make it. It may happen. That's, that's not my intent at this time, though, but, but, anyway. And I do appreciate the offer of the cruise, that was very nice. But, no, thank you.
I would ask, before you go too far on this, I do have a legal opinion. If you want to vote at it, let's go ahead, but my legal opinion says you can't ask someone to do that.
Well, anyway, I think, Peter, I think you were just.
We're not looking for conflicting legal opinions here.
You wanted to just explore the other options.
Liability insurance is for.
What's that?
I said, it's what public liability insurance is for.
Are there any of the other options that you wanted to talk about, or are we done?
No, we're done.
Okay, all right, let's go, let's, council, if it's okay, I don't want to rush you out of this, but, or do we need to move on to the city manager's report?
We do.
There was still another item.
B.
Did we?
Yeah.
And let me just explain B a little bit, and also a conversation I had with Lisa. First of all, I went through both the joint supple interlocal, and that's the one as the beach road widening, along with the master transportation planning agreement. Although the master transportation planning agreement has technically expired, it was, it's a planning agreement, and the planning agreement contemplated annual review at budget hearings to figure out what you wanted to do with the roads, and also acknowledged that the need for the city to create a local character to roads within its boundaries and need to phase projects. The recommendation was instead of terminating the interlocal agreement or doing something, and also remember, per the interlocal agreement, Lee County gives 50% of money, I mean, it's a match-type deal. So you probably want some situation where if you come up with a different vision for Benita Beach Road, you want Lee County to match it. And then the other thing is, if you can't get it, remember, Lee County is a bigger government, and it's their jurisdictional road, so they can beat us up, and that's explained in there. And you probably don't want them to do that, but if, it's something you can work together. So there was a four-point recommendation on the second page of the green sheet, basically having the city just letting the county know, hey, we're not going to send a check November 15th this year, we want to look at the projects and figure out what we want for that area, you know, consistent with the visioning statement. The letter should, you know, ask county to stop and suspend, again, the word suspend, services of the consultants and contractors and reconcile funds, and then amend the interlocal agreement for any unused funds, because Lee County may be holding some, I mean, holding some of our funds at this point. And while it's not a letter, during your vision study, actually determine whether, you know, how to amend that project. That's, that would happen during that vision study.
Counsel, I have a suggestion. You probably want to leave this alone for now, and mainly because, mainly because I talked to Lee County, and they don't have any money for the road anyway, so there's no danger of them, wee, rushing out there and doing anything. There isn't. And you can, you can get your staff to go ahead and.
Well, and we have no money because it's been taken out of the budget.
And you have no money, and if you don't put your 50%, they sure as heck aren't going to do it. So I don't think there's any danger there. So I think that the, you do your study, you do both those studies, you figure out what it is you want to do with the roads, and then you go back to the county and you renegotiate the contract, or the agreement.
So just the.
I think that's, before you take, before you dismantle it. I, I would think that that would be proper. Janet?
Thanks. I just, you know, was thinking, like, how do you break this up? And I didn't know if we needed to amend that sixth supplemental part that talks about this area, and do we, do we think about, and not, maybe not today, but do we think about doing some sort of, like, similar structure as to what we have on Imperial between Beach Road and Terry, where we took the county section and said, okay, that's ours? So, you know, rather than assuming responsibility for all of Beach Road, that maybe what we do is just kind of put them on notice that we're thinking about that we'll take over this section of it, and this will become ours.
And I think that's something that should be done during the vision study, when you guys figure out what you want.
Right, that's what I said, not tonight, but I'm thinking that it would, might be the answer.
Right, and I think that if, if the study's done right, and I think that it's going to really take some doing to get, to get that all carved out to what you want to find out from this study, I think that that'll be one of the options, or one of the, one of the mechanisms that you get to your goal, whatever that goal and vision is. It may take a variety of different agreements, or, or whatever.
Or simple, simple amendment.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it is, so.
Yeah, I just, because I don't think, I agree, I don't think there's any rush to do this letter or do anything on this.
The road's not going to pop out of the ground, it's just not, it's not going to do it.
Once again, they've heard loud and clear how we feel, too.
Right, right.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
I have a question about.
Yes, Mike.
The road impact fees. How do we go about changing that, so that way they don't have to be used just for roads? I know what already came in has to be used for roads, but I know a lot of cities are switching to mobility fees, so that way they can use it for multimodal transportation, bicycle, pedestrian, mass transit.
Sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, sidewalks.
Councilmember, we, without, I'd prefer not to answer that this evening, I'd like staff to have a chance to opt, to look at mobility fees versus impact fees. Right now, impact fees have to be spent on increasing capacity on the roads. That's the law. If we look at a different type of fee, like mobility fees, I would like the chance for us to take a look, closer look at what they are, how they operate, what they can be spent for, and then bring back a report to council, if that's okay with you.
And if we did change the, the impact fees that we already have for roads, we could use them for, say, like, Old 41 from Benita Beach Road to the county line, because that would be increasing capacity and going to four lanes. Right?
Yes. If it increases capacity, if it goes from two to four lanes, that's increasing capacity, but just for the two lanes, the new lanes that you're adding, you can use impact fees as they stand right now for that, yes.
But if we wanted to make that multimodal, we'd have to kick in the extra money to take care of the sidewalks and bicycle paths, whatever else.
Well, there's, there's other funding sources, like gas tax, that can be used for those kinds of things as well. You don't necessarily have to pull those funds from ad valorem taxes.
But the, if you four-lane the road and included curb and gutter and sidewalk, you can use impact fees for that.
Because you, yes.
Road impact fees.
Right. I'm not sure about landscaping, but yes.
But you can't go back and use road impact fees to build a standalone sidewalk, or something, you can't do that. But I think that the answer to your question is, the right way to do this is, not put them on the spot, if you want to investigate what the advantages and disadvantages of multimodal fees and stuff like that, let's send, let's send staff out there and get them to, get us a report back, and let's hear the pros and cons. That may be the way we want to go.
I'd like to make a motion to have staff look into.
Okay.
Mobility fees versus road impact fees.
And I'll second that, please.
There's a motion, a second, to look into mobility fees. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Schlaacka?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Look at that. Look at us getting along.
Yay.
Okay, and now, are we to the city manager's report now?
Yes, I'm all done, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And now we're to mayor and councilmember items, and we have, Janet, this is yours.
Yes, it is, thank you. You know, this was brought to my attention with the increased possibility of motorized traffic in our Astero Bay, and, and if any of you have ever had the wonderful opportunity of being out there in a paddlecraft and have a motorized boat come by and swamp you, there needs to be an education process to get the word out about that, these motorized vessels, where we will have an increase going in and out of these new marinas, that there are people out there that need to have, you know, let's give them a little room, give them a little space, be cautious, that there are paddlecrafts, we've got a lot of stand-up paddleboarders be cautious that there are paddlecrafts. We've got a lot of stand-up paddleboarders out in our bay. And then, so this is a safety component, but then there's also the environmental protection of our bay and the seagrasses. I can't tell you how many times that I affectionately call those folks joe boaters that decide that I can get up on plane and I can get across that seabed, and you can see the propeller line, that it's ripped up the seagrasses. And, you know, for those that follow how important that area is, and, you know, the fine work that FGCU is doing with the replanting of the oyster beds, and then that can just be torn up in one second with somebody who's probably, most likely, not even from the area, and they've rented a boat for a day, and they're just gonna go willy-nilly out there. So I would just asking for some, um, support for staff to look into and working with the other local agencies to make sure that we're doing all that we can for protection of the Estero Bay, 'cause once you lose it, it's gone. So, um, that's, and, and also to protect our, our folks out there in paddlecrafts. That's a motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
And the, the motion is just for, for staff to investigate what, what's possible and.
And what's going on. Like Kathy brought a lot to light because she had, you know, talking with people about what my green sheet was about. So, you know, just so that the other agencies locally know that, that it's, is a forefront for us, and we wanna protect us, our bay.
Probably in, in that line, you probably need to bring some people from the Estero Bay Aquatic Preserve in, and, and, and see what the regulations are. And, and also the limitations of what a municipality can do so far as setting speeds and that type of thing. Go ahead.
I, I talked to a couple people, including Bob Wasner from FGCU and Justin McBride from Lee County Natural Resources. And what Justin advises, there are some areas in the circled area that I provided, or that is in the green sheet, um, that there are manatee speed zones in place, but there's not signage, just like Kathy mentioned, same thing. Normally, they don't like to put signage unless they actually have to, and if the channelization is complete. Um, as Justin explained to me, they will look at things, you know, very specific area, targeted areas, um, very similar to traffic analysis, and when they have traffic warrants, uh, very similar in the water boating guise. The term used was negative user interaction. Then natural resource will look at speed zones, and you would expect to have a lot of participation from law enforcement, um, on making sure that anything, but we, we've done.
Like with anything, though, you need to post it so that they can enforce it. So it's, you know, it's one of those things.
But if there's a lot of interaction or accidents, that's when, you know, there'll be more now. As I understand it, uh, I'm gonna talk about an applicant. The proposed Estero Bay Marina is planning to have actual, um, um, share, I, I'm not sure if it's the sheriff or if it's marine patrol, but one of them is actually gonna be at that location.
That's awesome.
Why don't we go ahead and, and bring Justin in and gather the information up? Because it's important to know, um, we know what we want to accomplish, we just need to know what can be accomplished.
Exactly.
Okay?
Yes, please.
Good. There's a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, Janet, do you have anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's start down with Bill. Bill, do you have anything for us today?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Okay, Mike? Good? Pete? Y'all set? Stephen?
Two things, uh, real quick, just a reminder, there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Benita Springs Fire and Rescue Training Center that has opened up, and that's gonna be Friday, August fifteenth, eleven AM to noon. And the other thing I wanted to say is that tomorrow's Purple Heart Day. And to all the Purple Heart recipients, thank you for your service. And we have Bill Pace on our Veterans Advisory coming as a Purple Heart recipient from World War II. So, Bill, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Steve, do you have anything? Uh, I, I have to tell you about, I, you know, I don't know if you remember, but, uh, we passed a resolution in support of the acquisition of the Gargilio property, which is in the, the Lee D RGR. I wanna tell you, uh, the governor, I gotta tell you, we're starting to become the odd couple, the governor and I. We really are, we really are. I mean, really odd, too.
Believe that.
But, uh, he, he actually said that. He says, wait, we're, you're here again? I'm like, yeah, I know. But anyway, not only did he do that, he came up with twenty million dollars for Audubon. I have to give that guy a hand, I, I tell you. And that is gonna help Benita Springs. I didn't know, I didn't know until that time, as I was plotting my way to get to Corkscrew Swamp Sanctuary, which is by road, probably thirty miles, that it is only, I mean, that boardwalk is only four miles from the border of Benita Springs, four miles. That's how close that is. That's how important that, that is for us. There, and so when you look at it in that context, that twenty million dollars, that's for Benita Springs right there. So, so thank you, Governor Scott, and for our legislative delegation.
Congratulations.
Now, anyway, uh, and with that, uh, let's see, approval of minutes? Would you like to approve those?
Move to approve.
Move to approve? Is there a second? We have motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Okay, and we are to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to any city matter, please come forward.
The budget.
What'd I do?